We'll call the board meeting for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Felka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion, receive the agenda as our votes are amended. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $1,232,859.15. The larger items, Sheriff's Department, $82,221; Maintenance Department, $37,737; CEGIS payment for the first half, $76,150; $32,518 for conservation; and then $507,152 for secondary roads of that, an additional payment for Grundy Road in the amount of $315,478. Everything looked normal.
We have a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of claims. Such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Item number four is project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy, good morning.
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 Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on our construction activities. Work continues on the Grundy Road project as well as our East Gresham Road Bridge Replacement Project. And then today, Blacktop Services has moved in and they will begin seal coating at various places around the county. We've got them doing about five miles of reseal coating this year. And then also, our stone column work has started today, and that's where we're installing those vertical drains. And I think I told you about that during the budget process. We're trying that as an experimental technique rather than a traditional subdrain on a portion of road. And then also, I've sent you information about the bus tour next week. I'm waiting on a few of you to RSVP, and then that will decide on the size of the bus we need for the trip. Can I answer any questions?
Can you let us know where you're putting those drains in so we can go out and see how it's?
Yes, absolutely. And we'll also, that was one of the stops on the tour next week.
Didn't you say a couple of weeks ago we're only 95% done on Cedar Opsie Bridge? Or is it completely done now?
It is, I believe, we turn in a completion form to the Iowa DOT, and so technically, it's now 100% complete.
All right. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Kathy, make sure the bus accommodates any of the public if they decide to go along.
Okay. Thank you.
James?
I just want to provide a quick update on the ARP funds. Conversations still continue with department heads. Things are going well. We are getting something together. I emailed you all a form. We are lacking a few numbers still, but that is to be expected. We still are kind of working through that. The other item that I want to talk about was our first work session to discuss the capital projects. I was going to put it on for the 27th, but with this bus tour coming up, I don't want to prolong that. So do we want to, do we want to push that out till August 3rd, then?
Yes.
Sounds about right. Okay.
You were going to present without the missing information.
Well, what we can do is, I wanted to get something out to you as much as possible or as fast as possible. So if that's just going to be talking about the capital projects to begin with, and we have to kind of slate in numbers, then that's what we'll have to do. I just, I don't want to prolong this too long before we get estimations. And speaking with, you know, for example, in speaking with Rory, a lot of those estimations just aren't coming back. When you, when you reach out to some companies, they just, they're so busy that it's taking such a long time to get an estimation back. So that's going to be, that's going to be something that we'll just kind of have to play by ear as we go along, so.
All right. Any others? I saw Yolando in the room.
Morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Officer. And then I have the presence to be here with my commissioner, Colonel Heine Warrington. And don't she look lovely today?
(laughing).
Hey, I'm trying to fit in where I can get in, but there. But we didn't have our commission meeting in the month of July, but I wanted to make sure that I was transparent to the board in what we've done over the last fiscal year. And so what you see before you, and I'll be able to email this out, is kind of like our statistical numbers ending our last six months in that standpoint. But what you'll notice in June is as the summer came up, and then we started doing other events, we started seeing more veterans participate and come into our office. And so you could see our third quarter numbers comparative to our fourth quarter numbers. Our fourth quarter numbers, you can see the increase. In particular, our veterans served initially came in our doors in that standpoint. Couple other emphasis that we're looking at is continually looking at our new veterans, our walk-ins, and our female veterans. We really are centered on those three goals. I'll be able to email this out, but I just want to kind of point those of what we're at. And it's going to, Heidi's going to bring it to the end. And then if we can go to the next slide, please. Really doing a fantastic job. I have to give my staff a heads off kudos. My staff, kudos for all the work that they're doing in servicing veterans. What I wanted to do here is, Kim, if you could blow this up just a little bit. And this is the monthly numbers of the monetary benefits that we bring county to county. One of the things that Yolando is looking at, when I'm looking at it with my staff, is how are we competitive with Treasury? How are we competitive with Conservation? And what we bring in return on investment back to the county in that standpoint. We're the smallest department there. But what I wanted to kind of show you was that in compensation for Blackhawk County, right now, we have about 1,495 veterans who are receiving either compensation, and that's about 2.0 million per month. So for the month of June, just in compensation, we, our veterans brought in 2.0 million, or about $2 million. And then we have what we call live pensions. Live pensions are veterans who are receiving a pension. Deaf and DIC, those are, that's the widow portion of it. I'm on Honor Guard, and one of the unique things that is different besides seeing that flag-driven coffin is now presenting that flag to that widow. But oh, by the way, what are we doing for that widow? But the VA allows us to do that. And in that standpoint, this is what we do. If a veteran dies from a service-connected disability, the widow is now entitled to a benefit, about $1,395 a month for the rest of her life, tax-free. And so that's another thing that we try to do is let those widows know after the mourning period, "Come see us," because there might be an entitlement in that standpoint. And then we're looking at some of our competitive. So if you could go down just a little bit, Kim. So we have the fourth-largest veteran population in Blackhawk County. But when we look at totality for the state of Iowa, we're bringing in the fifth-largest amount. One of them that we're chasing is Potaway County. They're down off of, next to Council Bluffs. And I really think the reason that they're a little bit above Blackhawk County is because of the active Air Force Base in Omaha. They really have a veteran population pool from that are retiring. But you got Lynn County that's out there. You have Hope County. You have the Davenport County. So we're the fifth-largest. So our goal going into, and I told that to my chairman, we're going to try to become the fourth-largest in also in totality of bringing in benefits. But again, it's based off of outreach, getting our veterans to come in, the ones that are eligible. Because not every veteran is eligible. You're looking at 7,000 veterans in Blackhawk County, but we're only seeing 1,400 of them getting compensation and pension, because not every one of them entitled to that in that standpoint. We have a large capacity of National Guard in Waterloo, but unless they do a Title X deployment, which is a federal deployment, they're not considered veterans. So they don't go in our population in that standpoint, unfortunately. Maybe that'll change one day. I was just down in Cedar Rapids on Sunday. The 133rd had the yellow ribbon. So there was 120 veterans that we now going to establish, some of them in Blackhawk County, but the 133rd is made up of various counties. But we have some new veterans that came in from their deployment. Other than that, I wanted to get into one other, because I see there's a large crowd, so. But I'll be able to email those. The last one is the power. Yeah. And then I'll turn it over to my chairman.
Can we do this slide?
Yes, the next one.
Okay. I just want to very briefly make sure that we are giving you what you need. And to me, the bottom line is, what does Blackhawk County get back each year from the amount of money you spend on the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs? And so we prepared this slide, and the bottom line is, in 2020, we brought in just shy of $60 million, and you all spent $366,000 for our operation. And we brought in just shy of $60 million, if you looked at the whole year. And last year wasn't a banner year because of COVID. And as Yolando just said, the veterans who are here in Blackhawk County, it's a two-part deal. They have to come in the door for us to serve them. But second of all, they have to have a compensable issue going on to bring in that money. But that's money that comes into Blackhawk County that these veterans spend here. And a chunk of it goes to VA healthcare right here. And so this next year, what we're looking at is to continue to do the outreach that we need to, but also do some rightsizing and look at what programs are we supporting that there is the greatest need for. And I can tell you, one of them that doesn't have a dollar amount to it, but it's an emotional one, is we need a functioning Honor Guard so that when we bury our dead, that we have the capability for every veteran who is buried to have an Honor Guard present. And right now, we're sucking wind on that one. We don't have very many people. Yolando spends a lot of his weekends performing that Honor Guard. And so we've been working with some of our mid-aged veterans to try and generate some interest in some activity there. That's one of the few projects we have that doesn't have a price tag attached to it. But I think it's really important because it serves, it's the honor part of how we do business, and it feeds right in with the Honor Flight and some of the other things. But we owe it to our veterans. So do you have any questions for us? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
I just want to highlight how it'll be done, is that if you see that example, we got two examples down there. You got an Agent Orange veteran who's awarded 100% service-connected disability. So monthly, he brings in $3,100 if he's a single veteran. And if you look at that times 12, he brings in $37,000, I mean, $37,000 on a yearly basis. That's a veteran that's rated at 100%. And then I gave you another example, a veteran that's rated at 50%, a Gulf War veteran. Again, he's married, so this 50%, he brings in $992 monthly, tax-free. So again, so if you times that times 12, he brings in $11,000 annually back to the county. That's tax-free to that veteran. Just gave you that kind of example, because that's how we get these numbers, by every veteran we bring in, and then you look at that totality in that standpoint. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
Any other department heads or elected officials in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right, let's move on to item number five, motion to approve the minutes from July 13th, 2021. We have a second and a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Heans, we have a hearing at approximately 9:05 a.m. That comes later on the agenda. And this is in regard to ordinance number 77-254, rezone request by Justin Schmitz. The consent agenda. Mr. Veder? We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Mr. Veder?
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Item 8A, contracts, under contracts and agreements. 8A is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Iowa State Association of Counties regarding the agreement to participate in the ISAC HIPAA program be approved and that the board chair be authorized to sign as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director. Yes?
So this program is really beneficial to Blackhawk County. HIPAA training is provided, and so that's one of our requirements for HIPAA policy. We have a day-long conference, and then there's other online training that I've taken and other members. We have access for legal assistance, and Mike Trinan has used that service in the last year. So I think it's real worth the money involved.
Is there a cost?
$1,750.
That should have probably been part of this resolution.
Yeah. I didn't notice that till just?
What is it?
$1,750.
This yearly or just one time?
Yearly.
Has there been any increase from previous years?
No.
It's the same.
It's the same.
We approve this every year?
Yep. Yep.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Item 8B is a resolution to accept the best bid submitted by ACES for IT services for fiscal year 2022 and to authorize the board chair to sign the contract for same as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director.
So the IT committee has, well, first, initially, Clint and I went through the 10 proposals that we received and narrowed it down to those two. We interviewed Locknet and actually had two additional meetings with them to go over some of their products. We had an interview with ACES as well. So once we decided on those two, we brought it to the IT committee and had a couple of meetings to discuss it. The result of that meeting is that the majority of the people approved going forward with ACES's contract. How we decided to look at the amounts is we took the base amount times the number of months, and then there are likely to be some things that are charged by the hour, as not everything is covered in this contract. Locknet's hourly rate is $40 more an hour. So we took 36 hours, kind of added that, because that's three hours a month, which I think is very conservative. And when you look at that, there was a difference of $3,038.15, but any hourly rate is going to adjust that pretty quickly. So I think that's very conservative. So the committee recommends that we move forward with ACES.
And that was, as you said, just a one-year commitment?
Right. Yes, I should expand on that. So our expectation is that by the end of the year, we will be out of that monthly service contract necessity. We have a few things in the budget this year, the help desk, the remote access. I can't think of the other thing. And then a couple of things that would be in the budget next year. We've already talked to ACES about either buying the firewalls from them when they're done. And then I've also gotten quotes for brand-new firewalls. But we would continue with the ForteGate appliances, and the configuration could be moved to the new machine, so. And this year, we've got it in the contract that Clint can see what's going on in there. So he'll be able to familiarize himself. We also, because he's a veteran, is access to ForteGate's training on the firewall. So we should be in good shape for that.
You keep mentioning one employee. Do the other employees in IT have the same option to look at it, or?
We looked at the tools that we were going to be, but they weren't part of the actual conversation.
Okay. And I'm assuming here, there's a cost of this, too?
Yeah.
Are we just approving the best bid, or is the contract going to come to the board?
The agreement is here. So what's in the agreement is the base amount, monthly amount.
How much?
Is $8,979.
James, we got to start having dollar amounts on here.
And I should have noticed that, too.
Because the board knows. We get an email, but the viewing public doesn't know what we're approving dollar amounts. So that should be part of the resolution all the time.
And I apologize for that. I just did not pick up on it, so.
What was the other bid?
The other bid, so what you have to think about is the total bid is what we did for 12 months. And so Locknet's, I mean, there was a difference of $3,738.15. So theirs was $1,08689.50 for the 36 hours and everything. And then the ACES agreement was $112,428.
Make a motion to table it till next week. With the numbers in there.
Second. There's a motion to table it and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
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 It is tabled until next week.
There's no problem with waiting another week, though. We can all be fine with that.
That's fine.
Item 9A, under other business. This is a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a labor equipment operator full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than July 20th, 2021. It was recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer. Kathy?
Yeah, this is just due to resignation, we need a new entry-level equipment operator out in secondary roads department.
Why did he quit?
He went to a different employer. I don't know all the circumstances.
Bigger county.
It was a private.
Private business.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. We have a second, I believe. Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is approved. Number 9B is a resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for one vacant lot parcel, 8913-13-356-010 located in Waterloo, Iowa, pursuant to subsection 446.31 of the Code of Iowa be approved, and said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Daryl Speller as recommended by Rita Schmidt, county treasurer. Veder?
This is Rita Schmidt, treasurer. This was a request for a vacant lot. He's paying the full amount that's due, which is $379, so there's no compromise with this one. And I recommend that we have you approve this.
Any other? Oh, yes. Tom?
$379.
$379, that is the full taxes, not paid since 2014 till now.
And they're going to pay the full amount?
Yes, they're paying the full amount, and taxes a year on this lot are $30.
Make that part of the motion, too. It probably should have been in there also.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
It is now about 9:23, and we're going to have a hearing on the proposed ordinance, number 77-254, the Schmitz rezone.
Motion received and placed on file. Prove the publication.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. All right.
Motion to close the hearing after oral or written comments were received and placed on file.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Oh, gotcha. Seth, is Seth here?
No, I'm covering for Seth.
Okay.
Fair enough with Blackhawk County planning. This is a rezoned, a rezoned approximately 7.23 acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to allow construction of three new single-family homes at east of 5211 West Mount Vernon Road. The applicant is Justin Schmidt, 1101 Flure Drive here in Waterloo. The 7.23 acres in question are located east of 5211 West Mount Vernon Road, which is approximately 675 feet west of Big Woods Road and West Mount Vernon Road intersection. The one parcel containing 7.23 acres where the three proposed rezone areas has been zoned a agricultural since 1982. Surrounding land uses are several rural homes zoned a agricultural district to the north-west and south, and a agricultural district and AR residential, agricultural residential district to the north and east. The rezoned area has been designated agriculture on the future land use map. None of the areas in the flood hazard area. The land evaluation score is 38, and least a score of 170, indicating low agricultural value. The applicant is requesting to rezon 7.23 acres from A to AR in order to build three new single-family homes. The current three, there are currently three proposed rezoned areas. And if the rezon request is approved, there are plans to plat the parcels into three lots through the minor plat process. The existing 16.72 acres is large enough to accommodate three developer lots and will meet the lot and size requirements of the AR district by being greater than 1.5 acres in size and wider than 150 feet. The applicant previously submitted the same request to rezon on August 20th, 2019. That request was unanimously denied by a 6-0 vote by the Planning Commission. Neighbor property owners were concerned requiring drainage in the area and the fact the land was still in agricultural production. The rezoned area has not been in agricultural production since 2019. The Planning Commission recommended denial by a 5-1 vote on the regular meeting on May 18th, 2021, and there was also opposition at that meeting.
The opposition at that second meeting, the same drainage?
Drainage and various other issues.
Any other, what others would like to provide comment? Either for or against.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Justin Schmitz. I bought this land in 2018, so it's been out of production for farm production.
At your address, Justin?
Oh, excuse me. 1101 Flure Drive, Waterloo, Iowa, 50701. And when I purchased this land, I looked at, we, me and my wife would like to build a house. And what I found out through ag advantage and everything else is that the soil itself is not very well, very good. It's very sandy loam soil, and it has a CSR around 38, depending on whether you use a CSR or CSR2, which I know they've adapted to CSR2. So I wanted to give myself some time to do some cleanup of the land, because it has been farmed. I spoke with a couple of different farmers that really, they were interested but not interested, more so because it was a cash, it was a shared cash crop before. And so I chose not to do that, because I wanted to clean up some fence rows, do some landscaping, do some redirecting water away from neighbors and myself. So I had spent the last three years or so doing that. And so I'm basically planning for, you know, for the future. I'm not asking for anything different than what is around within, you know, a half a mile radius. Big Woods has roughly 12 homes or so in the same vicinity. There is agriculture around there. I spoke with Richard Donley. Excuse me, let me back up. One of the things that I did implement is I'm looking at a three-acre parcel for myself, and then two and a quarter to two and a half acre parcels for two other people as well, which would be on the frontage roadside with a shared driveway, which I've already put that shared driveway in to my building, existing building that was there, and started my road up to my house right now. One thing I did do is I've been in contact with the NCRS or the USDA. So right now, I have implemented about five acres roughly. Or I'm doing about 2,000 feet of windbreak in trees. So I went, this year, I planted about 300 trees or so for a windbreak. Also did an acre and a half. Also did an acre and a half of pollinator on this southwest corner, excuse me, southeast corner of the property and also did another three quarters of an acre of prairie grass. And my intent is if this was to to pass, that the rest of the remaining land itself will eventually be put into more of those programs so that I can, so that we can, you know, preserve as much of it as possible. I guess that's all I have. You guys have any questions for me?
Did you address the, some of the concerns, obviously, were drainage?
Correct.
Did you address those concerns with the people?
I did. One of the main concerns with drainage, and this is, and I've talked with Kathy Nichols, with the supervisor, I actually was involved with her on the drainage side of the columns that they're doing as an experimental thing. And the biggest thing that, from my experience is, in being in the construction side and all that, is none of the driveways out there have culverts underneath them. So what they get is, it's more so a concern in the winter because the ground is frozen, it's non-permeable. So what they get is they do get some ponding in the ditches. Now, when I put my driveway in, I got my permit and everything to do my driveway and the county engineer, whether it was Kathy, I don't remember who I was dealing with, but did not require me to put a culvert in because of the area and the lay of the land because of the drainage. The, I went ahead and put a culvert in because I did not want water standing in the winter time, and that's the, that's the biggest key. I did some re-landscaping and have diverted, put in waterways, and that's where I'm still working on some of that. A lot of it is all done, but once that is all complete, then I will probably, I've talked with pheasants forever already to implement, you know, some more native grasses and that kind of stuff to, you know, to do that portion of it.
Mr. Schmitz, I guess I have a question.
Yes.
The first time this project came up, I think it was rejected by a six zero.
Correct.
By planning zone.
Correct.
And typically when someone brings it back, there's been a change or something that's happened or, you know, to make that decision change.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it was like unanimously, or not unanimously, but a five one. So I was gonna say vote this time to reject it as well. Was there anything that you did, I guess, that changed the project from the first time to the second, other than we just had a difference of a new person, I think, on the board?
What, and this is just personally my opinion, what I'm seeing is, I've had some conversation with the neighbors. I've tried to have some conversation with some neighbors, some don't want to see what I want to do. But a lot of it comes down to, in my personal opinion, is they just don't want it. And, you know, I've contributed to the road thing, I've tried to be, you know, as neighborly as I can. My neighbors directly east-west of me, Ashenburners, Ashenbrenner, excuse me, does not have a problem. Olson across the street from me does not have a problem with it. So, I mean, I've addressed a lot of the issues that the, in the first planning and zoning meeting, it was, well, you didn't come talk to us. I apologize for that. I did not come talk to you and, you know, tell you what I was doing. And I, I apologize to, you know, a good portion of the people. You know, also on the other note, I feel that it's the, and I don't want to, I'm looking at it from a logic standpoint versus a emotional vote. So it, I don't see, I'm not doing anything different than anybody else has done out there. At some point in time, their houses weren't there. We have, you know, several houses on Big Woods. There was a, there was a person, I don't know who it was, but there was one over on Waverly Road that took ten acres and put six lots on it. So I'm not trying to do anything beyond what is, what is happening out in the, in the rural areas. The, I've, I have, so I don't know where the, where that, how that vote came about. I did not specifically or was not given the chance to ask, well, what was your decision, you know, based on? It's a yea or nay or whatever. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but, I mean.
So the major issue is still the drainage from the people that were opposed to the project?
But I don't believe it's a drainage issue. I mean, and that's, that's just from my, you know, a personal opinion. You know, I've worked for a civil engineer and I know, you know, I'm in the construction business, I know how that things, you know, how things work. And that's why I've done some moving some dirt around and moving things around to, you know, I put in a waterway between me and Ashenbrenner to, because when I first bought it in the winter, his driveway would be flooded. I've talked to Ashenbrenner and I said, if you want to put a culvert in, because they do have water that sits in their ditch in the winter time. And if you want to put a culvert in, great. And I've already talked to him about putting a French drain in between, just on the other side of, or basically our shared property line to be able to ask, access that. So a lot of my drainage issues is, is winter time. And, and I've, I've done, I've spent the last three years and a lot of man-hours to, you know, accommodate that, you know, and to make sure that I'm not pushing any water on anybody else. My one drawing does show, I call it retention or water retention, down in the bottom. And I did that, there is no, there's not a pond there, there's not anything else. It's basically just a place for surface water to, and that's, that's where my acre and a half of my pollinator is at. You know, so I've implemented a lot of things to improve and to, you know, from the neighbors. I've talked to Kathy Nichols about, you know, cleaning the ditches out because the ditches need to be cleaned out. You know, I know they're busy, you know, and so I've, you know, I believe that the drainage issues, I think, is, in my personal opinion, is a lot of the lay of each individual person. Some individual houses are, are not built up correctly, you know, whether they were built in the fifties or sixties or seventies, you know, so. And when I say built up correctly, you need enough flow and enough drainage away from your house. Otherwise, it's the same reason that Cedar Falls requires a sump pump, you know? So, you know, it is a very sandy soil. I've actually talked to Schaller Well Company and just, you know, how deep are we gonna need to go? What's, you know, what's my soil? And he says, you're, you know, basically a sandy loam. There is some sugar sand in there and that kind of stuff too. So the drainage, from, from my point of view, is what Kathy is doing as an experimental thing with the, the road is, once you get below that frost line, then the water dissipates. So.
Any other more, any more questions from the board?
Anybody else would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Wheeler.
Good morning, Board of Randy Wheeler, fifty-ten West Mount Vernon Road, Cedar Falls, across the street from Justin's rezone request. There's a lot of neighbors here from Big Woods and Mount Vernon Roads that are directly bordering Justin's project and the rest of them live on Big Woods, Mount Vernon, close proximity. I went around all my neighbors, the New Road Project years ago, went back to those same neighbors with a petition. Petition that's very short. We oppose the requests, oppose the rezone request for multiple houses that Justin is passing. The neighbors and property owners who live on Big Woods and West Mount Vernon Roads oppose the rezon, Justin Smith's land because he can build multiple houses. We are not opposed to him building a single dwelling and would welcome him and his family into our community. All of us bought out in the area because there's anywhere from five to twenty acres each person owns. We like the space. We don't want multiple houses in that area. If we wanted that, we have the option to move into town in the city limits where we have neighbors really close to us. I went around to the neighbors, I have collected thirty-seven signatures on this petition. I would provide a copy to the board if they would like it. Justin brought up his close neighbors next door to him, as in Ashenbrenner. The new owner is Dan Holtermann of the Ashenbrenner ground. Kelly Olson is across the road from him. Dick Donley is bordering him. He also, you know, all these names are on this in opposition to him having multiple houses. To supervisor member Leyland, you requested, if there's any bit, been any changes, we've been to planning and zoning in nineteen when this was currently row cropped into corn. Brad Renter was the farmer of this ground. He asked Justin if he could continue to farm it. Justin said, no, don't want to rent it, don't want anybody farming. Find his land, he can do what he wants to with it. But all the places around him, myself included, I'm farming the ground. I have mine in corn this year. It's not the best ground. Admittedly, I farm out by Dunkerton also, much better CSR. But it, it is still ag land, and that's the main reason why planning and zoning twice rejected this rezon. Nineteen, he brought it up, six oh, down. This year, he brought it up, five one, down. Now he's coming to you guys wanting to overturn planning and zoning's decision. Nothing's changed, to your question, nothing's changed from nineteen to twenty-one to the board supervisors. There's, there's nothing, nothing's changed. It's still farmable ground. Justin's moved a lot of dirt around on the, on the property, but it still is farmable ground and there are, Brad Renter will, is still willing to farm it. And there's a lot of people showed up from the, from the neighborhood around there here that will probably want to, want to speak, but appreciate you guys' time today and we just, if you guys'd like a copy of this, we're very willing to provide it. But I got a hundred percent of the people that I talked to do not want multiple houses out there. We're okay with Justin and his original idea of one house, but the next-door neighbors to him all signed this. Kelly Olson said he was okay with it according to Justin's conversation. He's the first one to sign it. He's not okay with it.
You can submit it for the record if you want to.
All right.
Thank you. Set it over here.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Are there any others that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
I live at fifty-five hundred West Mount Vernon Road in Cedar Falls. I have lived there since two thousand. And I can tell you, we have serious drainage issues out there. In two thousand sixteen, Mount, West Mount Vernon Road was the only road you could get out of North Cedar. Everybody from North Cedar had to come our way and, because everything was flooded. And nothing has been done to change that. You know, he's only owned the property since two thousand eighteen, so he's not been aware of the ongoing problems and seen them. You know, this has been a dry winter, a drier winter than normal. So this spring, we didn't have any problems. But normally, we do. Normally, our driveways on, we have a culvert on our driveway that nobody else does, so all the water comes from the field and then just pools and goes down Mount Vernon Road. So the drainage problems are still a major concern. And I just would like to say that I would like you guys to seriously consider why planning and zoning voted it down and not overturn their vote just based on, you know, him jumping through. Honestly, he's not going through the proper channels because planning and zoning should say yes and then, you know, goes from there, which you guys know. But I would just ask that you consider, all of us out there, who would be directly affected by this project or could be, and take that into consideration when you make your vote.
But he is going through the right process. He has the right to go from there to here.
Right. But planning and zoning, if they thought it was a good idea, they would have voted yes.
Yeah, I understand it. But I'm saying even they deny it or approve it, it still comes over here.
Right. But if they would approve it, then it comes to you guys to approve, that's one thing. But they said no twice.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's all I'm saying.
How long have you actually lived out in this area?
Twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years?
Yep. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom that would like to provide comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Yuri Dimitrov. I'm the neighbor. I'm living in Mount Vernon Road, fifty, fifty-two forty-eight. It's almost cross-street from the project. I see a couple lie over here. Yeah, I go to make the comments only for one, who is important of the draining system. Nobody approved it to this owner bring over there dirt from somewhere. This owner is talking about to move the dirt around of him property, who is not correct. This bring almost over a hundred dump trucks with dirt from somewhere. I own the property in my wife's ballot in nineteen ninety-five. I'm living over there from nineteen ninety-nine. Yeah, I remember very correctly the issue with the drainage. The previous speaker is my neighbor. A couple years ago, need to go with the snowpaw to shovel the water from the cornfield to be able to be, she be home. She not be able to drive or walk to her house. The couple neighbor been over there with tractors, with snowpaw, try to push the water to pass the full cornfield, be able to be free. Yeah, I remember very well in two thousand eight where my basement, everybody's basement is full with water to the ceiling. To the drainage system over there, the flooding issue over there, it's existed for the last twenty years, maybe, but more. From day one, I remember to almost every year over there got a drainage problem. In two thousand eight, I not be able to go home for three days if everything is flooded. And now to bring extra dirt in the same area, I think about this is not correct. I banned the construction business. I built houses twenty-five years, so I know very well how this work too. I own the construction company and I make developments, so I know exactly how this work. You go to bring the dirt, it's not legal before you have some type of proof, especially in this area where is the flood area. You got lots of flood issue in the winter. This one of the reason why our section in Mount Vernon Road, you not be able to see with asphalt, exactly for the same problem, with too much water, enough draining. Yeah, you have draining after you build. Yeah, you have draining after you build three feet down, you'll be coming to the sand. No, the top soil is not draining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any others in the boardroom that would like to provide comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Morning.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Lynn Wheeler. I live at 5810 West Mount Vernon Road. We've been out there for 18 years, and Justin mentioned, had a phrase when he spoke earlier that said they're doing it in rural areas everywhere. To me, that's a redefinition of rural. Rural is by definition agricultural with very few houses associated with it because people are living off of the land. That's where we are at, and he is looking to redefine that, and that's where a lot of the opposition comes from. He mentioned also the other projects in other areas, but that's not our area. And the reason that the Planning and Zoning Committee decided to vote it down is because it was taking ag out of production, and that's their main job is to watch over ag production. The houses that are around us all have, like my husband mentioned, numerous acres, and all of them are surrounded by some sort of agricultural product, whether that be hay grounds, corn, beans, whatever that is surrounding that person's property. And we're looking at redefining that definition by putting three houses in this area and taking more agricultural land out of production. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others in the boardroom that would like to provide comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Yes.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Rick Morris. I'm an attorney over at the Beecher Law Firm. I live at 812 Slap Tail Trail in Cedar Falls, but I live out in the county. I represent Justin and his wife Nicole in their efforts to get this property zoned to the point where they can put in three houses. 27 years ago, I helped a friend of mine take 12 acres and turn them into six houses, and that's where we live. Three years ago, just up the street from this location, as Justin mentioned, on Waverly Road, 10.67 acres turned into six lots. We're, we're not looking to do that. Yes, it's agricultural ground, but anybody who is farming knows that 37 CSR is not good agricultural ground. We are not taking prime agricultural ground out of production. Maybe there are those that like to farm 37 to 40 CSR ground. I represent a lot of farmers in my legal practice, and when I've talked to them about this, they wouldn't even bring a combine down the road to farm it the way it should be farmed. It isn't going to generate enough for those who are actively involved and really count on farming as their occupation. I'm guessing that most of the people that are here, and some might, but most of the people here do now count on farming as their livelihood. They do something else, they've got their acreage out there, as indicated, they're in five acre plots and so forth. Mr. Schmitz and his wife have a little over 16 acres. So arguably, if you had three five acre plots next door, that's three houses and 15 acres. They're looking to put up their own house, which, as the board knows, they can do without your approval because they bought the ground and they can put up one house. The detriment is, once they do that and take that permit out, they are barred for 15 years of doing anything else to that property. So it's kind of like, you know, what do you gamble with, you know? Mr. Schmitz and his wife want to do it, I had a conversation with him, he's got a daughter that's going to graduate from high school, he's got another one that's going to head into late junior high and into high school. So from a timing standpoint, he'll be way along in his career when he could ever take another crack at trying to put two lots out there. As I mentioned about representing farmers, I also represent a lot of developers, and there's a lot of developers out there that would take anything they can and turn 40 acres into 30 lots, and, and nobody, nobody complains about that and so forth. They view that as progress, they view that as additional tax base, they view that because the steps are taken to take care of the issues that maybe others are concerned with. I don't doubt that this area probably has head water. I, I don't doubt that they've mentioned that and so forth. Sounds like part of it might be a culvert situation where the water doesn't have a chance to continue to flow, you know? If you put a dam up, the water's going to back up. If you have a driveway and it's not culverted, that water's going to stop right there and build back up in your yard. It's interesting that the reference to that was from the winter, not getting poured on in the spring or poured on in the fall. It's in the wintertime when the snow accumulates and so forth, the ground freezes and it's got nowhere to go. Mr. Schmitz has done things for the last two or three years, as he's indicated. He's gotten the NRCS involved to put plots out there, he's planted trees out there, he's put in a driveway out there. He only wants the opportunity to be able to give to others, to other families, the opportunity to build a house out in the country. Those of you that pay attention to real estate know that acreages are hot. I mean, not that real estate period isn't hot, but if you had an acreage and it was a nice acreage somewhere, it's, it's going to get a lot of attention. Had that happen in an estate and it, and it got sold in a matter of a week or so. So that, that activity is out there. He's not looking to take 40 acres and turn it into a mini rural development. If you take a look at the development of Black Hawk County, well, why are we all here? You know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be here because it's got great ground. Grundy has even better ground. You know, there shouldn't be any houses allowed in Grundy then, if you kind of want to take it to the silly nth degree is that, well, my gosh, why, why did they build Grundy Center? Why did they build Reinbeck and all those areas? Because they're taking ground out of production. Well, people have the right to kind of live where they want. You know, ag land in Iowa is a, is a big deal. We're an agricultural economy. This is not a huge contributor to that, like other areas that would be involved if taken out of production. And, and I understand that because I work with that in multiple ways in my own, in my own practice in my daily life. So we've got seven or eight houses along Big Woods Road. Those people got there, but at one point, they weren't there either, you know? And somewhere along the line, they pick up their two, three, five, 10 acres, and they've got a house right there. If you superimpose, if you look at Mr. Schmitz's exhibit number seven, you can see, house, 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 house. You take his property and you superimpose it over that, there's probably eight or nine houses in an area in which he wants to put three houses. So we've all heard of that expression, nimba, not in my backyard. It's kind of like, well, I got there, but now I don't want anybody else to be there. Well, you can be there, but just you, even though you've got multiple acres and the law allows you to do that, we just don't want you to be able to do that, you know? We're not infringing on their right. Take their 20 acres and turn it into a couple more lots if they wanted to. That would be their prerogative if, if they wanted to. This doesn't have a future as a huge farming parcel. At 37 CSR, I, I'm sure if I called 10 of my farm clients and said, hey, do you want to farm? They won't even want to farm it for free. They wouldn't want to waste their time, money, and energy to put the inputs in and their expense to get what little crop you're going to get at a 37 CSR. Flip it around, if it was a 73 CSR, you bet. 80 CSR, 90 CSR. We all know who deal with land, that those are the greater and more desirable farm parcels. So, you know, I was looking, as I was sitting here today, and I see promote economic vitality. We're not trying to turn the whole county into an economic neighborhood. We're just looking to add a few more available residential lots out there, two plus the one that he's got the right to build even if we weren't here today, to give a couple other people that same opportunity. Because if somebody like him doesn't, where they're going to find him? It's going to be kind of like, oh, gosh, we're going to, we're going to make sure we make a decision to keep those number of lots down just because we want to, you know? It, it's, it's not good farming ground. We're, we're not doing something to adversely affect the farming community. My understanding of what Mr. Schmitz has done is he's done everything he needs to, to deal with the drainage there, to deal by putting a culvert in under his own driveway, to get with the NRCS, to plant a lot of trees. And if you think about it, he's going to have more trees out there than probably the whole neighborhood, you know? There are 24 houses from that corner up the street to Waverly Road. You go the other way. I didn't, I didn't go that way, so I can't count that number of houses. So we're talking about three houses, not 30. He's got the right to put one in there, and so it's, you know, I, I think drainage is the go-to point to make it sound like, oh, well, we'll pull that out of the hat so the county won't want to do that because that'll be a huge deal, and that'll give them something to deny it. Everybody has to deal with that in their own right. I don't see that Mr. Schmitz's property at 16 acres is going to flood the neighborhood if there's three houses there rather than what? They've already got flooding issues, and it's not because of Mr. Schmitz's property, it's because of existing problems that are already there, and his land and his potential to put three houses there isn't going to exacerbate it. In fact, in any way, it might help solve it because others would be more proactive in improving their property, taking the steps to put culverts in, working with the county to clean the ditches out and so forth as they've got the time and the availability. So I think this area, if we look down the road a few years, there's going to, there's going to be houses there. It, it's not going to be like, wow, we're going to be saving a farming community if we deny this request today. You're actually going to be allowing that area to continue to flourish for the benefit of Black Hawk County because this isn't property that anybody really, especially this owner, wants to farm. So we appreciate you letting us have the opportunity today. We ask that you carefully look at all the materials that have been submitted so that you can make a decision moving forward with economic vitality.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else in the boardroom? Are there any, is there anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide comment? All right, we'll take a vote now on closing the hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. A resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. It has been moved. Is there a second? And a second, Mr. Veder, roll call vote to waive the two hearings.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes. Ordinance adoption, a yes vote supports the rezone, a no vote does not support the rezone. This is an ordinance adoption that the ordinance amending, ordinance number 36 has amended, the Black Hawk County, Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 254 to section 6, paragraph B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Justin Schmitz and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77254.
I believe this will take a super majority vote, too. I'll make a motion so we can call for a vote.
I'll second it so we can do the same. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
White?
No.
Leyland?
No.
Velka?
No.
All right, the ordinance is not being amended. Item 9D, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates to COVID-19.
Good morning, board. I just wanted to provide a brief update for where we're currently at with COVID-19 and some of our efforts for this week, as well as some updates from last week. So as far as our, our current status with COVID-19 goes, we are still currently at the moderate response level of less than 10% average, 14% positivity, and greater than 50 cases per 100,000 over the past seven days. We are closely approaching the, the high level with our percent positivity going up to 9.8% yesterday. Our total positives are at 16,630, which was an increase of 49 from over the weekend. We are at 15,843 recoveries and 316 deaths. Some updates on items that we are working on this week. We'll be having our youth vaccine event this afternoon at the Board of Sports Flex to, to try to vaccinate some youth before school starts in the, in the fall. So that'll be running from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. this afternoon and this evening. So we're hoping to have a good turnout at that event. As far as vaccination goes, as of yesterday, we are at 16.7% of Black Hawk County residents 18 over having received at least their first dose of vaccine and 57.6% being fully vaccinated. And then one update, additional update on COVID-19 is on COVID-19 testing. Starting on Friday, IDPH, along with Test Iowa, has started their at-home testing program where people are able to request at-home test kits to be sent to their home or able to pick them up in the community on one pickup site here in Black Hawk County Youth People's Clinic, and then they are able to return those to, return those samples to lab for, for testing, and then testing takes about 24 hours once they arrive at the lab for, for results. This is all able to be run through the Test Iowa website that's been updated to facilitate the, the ordering of these at-home test kits, as well as a locator on where people can pick them up in the community, as well as our healthcare system partners are still offering testing as well, since the Test Iowa site has closed. That was all I had for updates for, for today. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Josh? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports and information from the board. We did receive an email from Mike in regard to board supervisors serving on the Board of Public Health. I guess a question I have, is anybody interested? I'm not.
I'll let you know.
Does we have no interest? I think we proceed, as far as I know, I've seen one applicant.
I want to see more than one applicant.
I would like to see that, too.
Especially this is important.
We'll go ahead. Could we possibly send a notice? In this case, it's the health department, but when we have other openings and other departments specifically to the organizations, like in this case here, the medical clinics and hospitals and doctors' offices, I, I honestly don't think, we, we try everything, but I don't know if we're getting the word out there.
Yeah, I think it's still an awareness issue.
And if we, you know, like if it would have been the VA, obviously, we target all the veterans groups.
We do that.
I know that, it's a part of the policy, but I think for these other boards, that maybe we could do that, it comes directly from this office and send it to all these different medical places, and, and I think we'd probably get a bigger response, I would hope.
I think it'd be a great news story, and I, I see nobody from the media in attendance.
Maybe they'll watch later.
But you know, to get one applicant, per county our size, in two months, you know, we got to do better, and I don't know. Also, maybe we can have Kayla send out a form letter. She can send it to the board to review and then send it out to all the different medical places and see if we get anything.
I think that's been tried before, but sure it doesn't hurt to do it again, but I was going to say, I know VA, they only had one applicant this time, too.
Well, VA has certain restrictions on the area of where they're from.
And get out the sort.
And then also, we can put the disclaimer in there that we do have to, to maintain gender balance.
Yeah.
So we have followed that, so I, I think it's worth a try.
I agree.
I do think there's, there's definitely more outreach to get because I think part of it is just people don't know about the opportunities, but we've clearly tried things, but I do, I do think we have a good applicant here, so I just don't want to drag this out too much longer, so we could put that, you know, if we do something, it, it needs to happen pretty much today, so we're getting someone placed within two weeks.
I think if James, if we could put something together and show it to the board real quick and then have Kayla send it out, it's worth a try. I don't know.
Anything's worth a try because I'm disappointed in the, just one applicant. It'd be nice to have at least half a dozen to vet.
Well, we have, over the years, though, had sometimes just one applicant. Move forward, a board of adjustment and P and Z are two boards we still need.
I just don't think people are really aware of it. I really don't.
Well, some people just don't want to spend that extra time or have the extra time either, so. We can try, but yeah, we need to do it sooner than later because I think this person even applied in May or something like that, so, if they're still available.
If we get something out yet this week, I think we could probably.
See if we can get another.
All right. Good. Any other items? Any other items?
Yeah, just sending our condolences out to the family, the father and the son that were killed in a collapse of that barn the other day. Bad news. I think it's a relation to the lady that runs Cattle Congress.
Any others?
I was going to mention the Urban County Coalition said they'd like to come to the board and do their presentation for the legislative session on August 24th, which is still quite a ways out there, so.
I won't be here that day. I'll be in Rhode Island.
Well, they said they could change it, but that was their preference.
That's fine.
So we can do that as well, but it's still ways out.
I can, I can read it.
All right. Any others? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.